Call this November 4th, Jackson County Commissioned Work Session to Order. Rock Hall. District Attorney Mr. Guppy.
Present.
Mr. Pugh, Mr. Venable.
Present.
Mr. Frigg, Mr. Miller.
Present.
Mr. Corum, Mr. Wilson.
Present.
Corum is present, we can't commence business, have our invitation by Mr. Porter and our pledge.
O'er God our Father, we are before you tonight and we're blessed to be here. We thank you for our daily blessings, we thank you for our individual blessings. We also thank you for the blessings that we have as a community to live on this earth, to live in this United States of America and in this state. And we thank you for your beauty, we recognize it at this time of year, your glory, the beauty all around us, we thank you for that and the chance to enjoy it. Be with these men tonight as they discuss the business of the county and the people of this county and pray that they'll be given wisdom and discernment to do the things that are of the best interest of the county and the people and make good decisions. God we pray you continue to watch over us and bless us, in Christ's name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item is approval of the agenda. We have nine items on the agenda, are there any changes before we proceed? If there are none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Motion.
Motion, we have a second.
Right.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed say no. Have no public comments, no one signed up this evening, so move on to the discussion items. First item is a quote from Campbell Remediation Services. We had, there'd been some discussion in the past about the annex building behind juvenile probation office there that, on what to do with that. In order for us to move forward with any type of thing, I think a lot of them talked a bit about tearing down that building and having a proper course to do something with in the future, we would have to go through remediation for those asbestoses that's in there. So this quote is a quote for those services to have the asbestos removed from that building so that we could tear it down or remodel, whatever we wanted to do at that point. So questions or comments on this? We don't have to move forward with this, but I wanted everybody to have this and get this on the table and see how we want to proceed.
How do you come up with a scope of work on this?
A study had been done, it's been two or three years back, but a study was done by Campbell Remediation Services on what all was included in that building, where asbestos went. So they took that study, what they found, and put that into what they were doing now.
They're giving us a square foot and linear feet, will they also give us a warranty statement that all asbestos has been removed from structure?
I think we could ask for that.
Sometimes you get involved in these things and they won't put a payment for 3,000 square feet and they leave us with 3,000 square feet.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? Is this something that we think we're ready to move forward with or something we need to continue to look at? If we were to move forward with it, we would use funds from Fund 112, there's money set aside for things, building projects like this, things that we would need to do, that we could use towards this.
Could you also ask Chairman that once this is done, the letter would state that we are ready for demolition, if that's so we so choose?
Okay.
Now, that's not only concerning the person to come up with a scope of work, there's also the person who did, I mean, they may miss something too.
Does it not need to go out for bid? No, it's under the bid law, so there wouldn't be any. We could look for additional quotes from other companies.
I don't know what these people do.
Yeah, there's not a whole lot of quotes, I think there's another group in Nashville that we could, that I know about that we could look to do, I'm not sure around here that will.
But when we get prices, I know a couple, I mean, I did one a half year ago, but it might, it might hurt you to their prices, save them, I could save a little bit of money.
What we could do is put this on the next work session, at that time we'll get back with Campbell, we'll find out if, about those two clauses that were mentioned, and then if you have someone that you can mention we can get in touch with, or if anyone knows of anyone, we'll also look to see if there's anybody else that we'd like, want to provide as a quote on these services. And of course, we'll probably have to base it on that previous report that was put out, it cost us money to have another report done, and they could use that previous report to base their services off of. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so we'll have this on the next work session and try to have that information together and see if we can't get some more quotes before that time. Okay. Next item is a resolution regarding sick leave. We had talked about allowing our employees to use sick leave towards their time of service, we all have a copy of a draft resolution here to proceed with doing that, and I think if you, Mr. Porter, you can kind of explain why this is happening.
This would only, the county has a policy regarding sick leave and we're all committed with that, accumulate up 1,200 hours according, according to the present policy, accumulate up 1,200 hours of sick leave. If you leave the county service for anything other than retirement, you don't get anything, but if you retire, you can get paid for up to half of that. For state employees, there is a provision that says that you can use, accumulate sick leave to reach retirement goal for good years of service. And so what this proposed resolution would do would allow our employees the same right that state employees have to use sick leave to reach their retirement goal. They could not use it to reach the 10 years minimum for vesting. You still have to be vested, but the other criteria of 25 years of service, no matter what age, you could use it for that purpose. That's what it's for. I do have a question in my mind, the information we got from the state several years ago and the current retirement regulations provide for 36 months, you can accumulate up to 36 months, but the statute that I looked at only allowed for 1,200. And I'm sure there is something else out there that I haven't found yet that would allow use of up to 3,600 hours.
I think, it's my understanding, I think, in speaking with someone from the state that that's the example, that's actually what the state uses.
Okay.
But they do allow us the lawsuits up to 36.
36 months, right.
And if we were to do this, I think it leaves the time open, I'd like to look at up to 12 months, we calculate the hours of that, but up to 12 months of sick leave that they may convert.
Yeah, the state has a calculator that's pretty simple, you figure it out, 12 months, whatever it is off the top of my head that it's in there, you figure it out pretty easy.
Any questions or comments on this?
Right now, can employees transfer sick leave to other employees for help?
Under certain conditions.
And this will still apply?
And I would recommend also that we leave the payout at 600 hours, even if we're increasing the hours that you can accumulate, leave the payout at 600 hours, otherwise it takes away the motivation to do this.
This would be an additional provision, it would leave the provision the Chairman was talking about, it would leave it in place as far as getting cash out.
So this is not replacing the conditions now, in addition?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? There's no objection, we'll place this on the meeting agenda next Monday night and move forward with that. If you have any questions on wording or anything before that, tell Mr. Porter now so we can get that corrected, otherwise we won't move forward with this. Next item is regarding local laws. I've given you all a copy of a list of local laws that have been brought up from time to time, we've had several different ideas and these are some of the ones I think we're ready to bring up this time. It's my understanding that with any of these items that we're about to go over, we would have to go through the legislature for this to happen, so that we'll need to pass a resolution in support of it, possibly pass a resolution with an outline of the law and get that to the legislative office, and we do need to do this as quickly as possible, hopefully by January. So they have to go and review it, of course, in that meantime, allow for any public input on these items and, of course, share why we want to do it. So we'll go through these one at a time, we'll start with the first. The first item is a $5 tag fee has been brought up, we place a $5 fee per tag per year on the current odd bill tag. This would be a big portion, and the reason for this is to help with our current budget deficit, as we know we have a nearly a million dollar budget deficit in place, this will go a long way towards helping with that. Unfortunately, it is an additional fee, but I think it's something small to keep the services in place that we have, so any comments or questions on this?
Are we proposing to do this on vehicles or trailer tags, boat tags?
We would need to discuss that and determine how we want to move forward with it. And I think initially we would say for sure on vehicles, as far as the other items, I'm not sure what the fees are and how we would want to have that, but we could consider all items if we wanted to. And we can, obviously we'll bring this up on multiple work sessions to get this written out, if we choose to continue forward, we'll begin putting a resolution together, begin putting some ideas on the law together and then figure out the details on it. Any other questions or comments? Is this something that we'd like to pursue as far as, we can begin, like I said, putting a resolution together, and obviously we need to hear public feedback on it and try to explain the purpose of it, but in the meantime, we need to be prepared, you know, what this is going to entail so that we can present that to citizens of Jackson County. Any other questions or comments on it? What we'll do then, well, for the next work session, I would like to bring this up in the next work session with Porter, if we could get some, some things very, Mr. Venable, if we were bringing that up, maybe the different types of tag fees we can look at and try to consider that, see where we can go from there. Anything else? Okay. Next item is regarding the solid waste and park revenue. Currently, those revenues or those funds are held to themselves, the general fund cannot use those funds for any purposes. The goal of this local law would be to allow ourselves to use solid waste revenues and park revenues to help support the general fund. The park and solid waste are both self-sustaining at this point in time, again, this would be another large portion of what we would need to get our general fund balanced, and it would be a very important part. This doesn't raise any fees in doing this, so that's a positive thing, it allows us to use funds that are there. And a good example on the parks revenue is right now, that money goes back into the park, which is a good thing, but we do have a capital improvement fund which can only go into capital improvements, that we can use as investments for the park, and then use these funds as a, to help support the general fund. So you're still putting money into the park, you're not totally losing it. The same way with solid waste, when we have equipment and things that need to be utilized. This would also allow for a little bit more relationship between public works and solid waste and being able to help each other out in times of need with the workforce. Questions or comments on that? Is this something that we'd like to pursue also?
Yes.
Okay. All right, if there's no objection on this, I'd like to, again, Mr. Porter, we'll get together and try to get some notions together. Some of these we may get to the legislature quickly, more quickly than others, but we need to move forward as quickly as possible in getting this together, so we'll work together this during the week and kind of in the next two weeks to try to get an outline of the resolution going. Okay? Next item is a business license law has been brought up. Currently, the way that the business license system works is everything is done by the state's, state's calculations, they've given us a book on what businesses we're paying, we have no say in that, of course, all the money goes to the state and then they give us our portion. So we've talked, there's been some talk about amending this or allowing us to put it either an additional fee or amending this to where we can bring that up to date. There's some business licenses, businesses that may pay a dollar for a particular license, so anything that we can do to clean up, anything that a local law could give us liberty on to allow to maybe bring those licenses more in line, I think would be important. This is another one I think that's going to take a lot of discussion as far as getting something laid out and planned out, but questions or comments on this particular one?
All of the current licenses.
The, currently the state puts out a, what's the word I'm looking for, they have a schedule of what all the licenses are and what you will pay for a particular license, so the county has no say in that schedule. That schedule, I think, was last updated in the 70s or 80s.
Is this related to their projected sales or business?
Some particular ones are, some are just based on the type of license, there are different categories. And, you know, there've been two different thoughts on something that we would do, it would be either to allow us to amend that or to increase that in some certain cases, or just to set a county license fee in place, a business license. And I think one benefit of that is a lot of folks that do business from out of county that are currently coming into county, if they have a business license in, if I understand it correctly, that business license in Marshall or DeKalb, they don't necessarily have to get one for Jackson County. So by setting a separate one in place, they would have to get one for Jackson County. Questions, other questions or comments on that?
Well, I know, I know if, you know, if people from Jackson County have to go into DeKalb County, they have to purchase a license, county license.
So DeKalb is actually set?
Yeah, you know, if you go from here to Marshall County, you have to purchase a license, but, you know, anybody can come in here and bid against our local contractors and don't have to buy any license, so it's kind of, it's not fair for the, for the business owners in Jackson County. So I think this would make it more fair, I'd say.
And that's what some, several counties I think do have a specific license further counting, which attention from that state. Any other questions or comments? This is one we're going to have to have discussion on to determine, you know, how we, how we know about it. What we may do is have a meeting in the board room, set up a special work session in the board room to have some more in-depth discussion on this, but we'll place this, we won't necessarily need to get something outline of this just yet because I think it's going to take some detail, but we do need to be thinking about this on the details of this and be prepared, maybe the next work session to discuss that further.
Porter, I think Madison has got one online, they're on, and check if you can, if you want to look into one of those sites. I'll show you.
Any other questions or comments on that? Okay, the next item is regarding nonpartisan elections. We've reviewed this and it does appear that we cannot have a local law that will allow us to have nonpartisan elections, it would require a state law to do that. What we could do in this particular case is send a request to the legislature, a resolution of request to the legislature, asking if they pursue that on a statewide level, that they allow counties to make that decision for themselves. So it would have to be a state law that would be changed, but it would allow for counties to make that decision themselves as to whether they wanted to do it. We don't know for everyone in the state, but only those that chose to do it. So questions or comments on that?
So that's how the cities are set up right now?
Well, the cities are set up under different statutes as far as the election process goes, and so theirs is nonpartisan by statute, whereas ours is partisan by statute.
At some point in time.
And if we chose to do this, then we would have to work with the other counties, of course, and see if we could get this moved forward, but I think there's definitely a lot of cost savings there, possible cost savings, I think. Of course, we can dive more into that if we choose to move forward with this. What are the thoughts or questions or comments on this?
100% want to move on, I want to try to get it in those flavors' hands by the time they get into session.
Grant a resolution.
Okay.
I'd like to bring this up too, that our community meetings and let's get some input, make sure everybody has an opportunity to.
Not only do the cost savings, but general public opinion is for it.
Yeah, I think you can do it in one of two ways, you can either do it as Chairman said, if you can get a, an act passed, probably constitutional amendment applicable to counties, all counties, or you could ask for a constitutional amendment applicable only to Jackson County.
But that'd be easier there.
Yeah, you see those on ballot all the time, you know, and constitutional amendment.
Statewide vote.
Statewide vote, amendment to Butler County, we don't care what goes on in Butler County, so we just don't vote, or actually vote in favor, but, so one of those two ways we could get it, it can be done, it's just won't be as simple as maybe thought started.
I don't know how anybody else feels, but myself, I mean, it'd be easier getting through legislature if we just had to do a resolution for Jackson County, you know, let other counties and the states proceed as they feel like they need to.
Well, that resolution, we'll get together and also have the next work session, then that's something I think we can move quickly on. We do have a community meeting on this Thursday, so we'll bring these items up at that point also, and then through the year, next year, as it's going through its track, if we do get a pick of legislature, any of these, as it's going through that track, we'll be looking for, as we go through our other community meetings, for input on that. Okay, the next item is regarding Public Works Fund 100. This would allow us to use Fund 100 in the same functions that Fund 111 is used, which is our general public works fund. The benefit of doing this is it allows us more flexibility. Currently, Fund 100 is only used for materials and equipment, and it's set up by local law and the amount that you can use for either, where we, obviously the controls we need to have in place for public works and making sure we're being efficient and all, this would allow us the flexibility to, you know, move the money to pay certain roads the way that we need it to, as opposed to right now, it's a very difficult reimbursement standard in getting these things done, so this would make it more flexible. We did actually put a resolution forward last year and it didn't make it to the floor last year due to whatever issues, but I'd like to see if we have the support, go ahead and put this to the floor again this year. This doesn't save us any dollars, it just allows for a little bit better management in those works. Any questions or comments on that? And I think, Mr. Porter, if we still have that resolution, if we look at that again and move forward with that. Okay, and the final item on the list is regarding the lodging surcharge. Currently, there's a 1% fee in place and a dollar fee in place on the county level, and all of that goes towards the recreation, not recreation, but the Chamber of Commerce and the Heritage Center for Tourism to promote tourism and bring tourism dollars in. So there've been different numbers thrown out there, but I'd like to see something small as far as the lodging surcharge or maybe the percentage, whatever. Obviously, it doesn't necessarily affect folks that live in Jackson County, it affects those people that are coming in, and even if we committed a little bit of these dollars to go towards some additional tourism funding, whether it be through advertisement or whatever else for Jackson County, or the development of some more tourist type attraction, whether it be outdoor activities or whatever, I think this would be a great asset for us to have and something that we need to look at also, especially since there are no additional fees to those folks in Jackson County necessarily, for those folks that are coming to do it. Questions or comments on this item? Comments on how to proceed? Do you want to research this? I think one thing we need to do is meet with some hotel managers if we do pursue this, is that something that?
Well, we need to explore lodging surcharge because that's one thing that really don't affect our citizens, and most, the ones that I've looked at, they're doing it everywhere else. So if we go out of town and stay, we're paying theirs, I just don't see what the, I think that's one great way to increase our revenue and not affect our citizens.
I agree with Mr. Level, I think, maybe this is one of the, my, it's been needed, they've been up for a long time, and I agree, you know, I travel a lot, every place I went to, I don't care what city, what state, it had a surcharge, it had quite a heavy surcharge in a lot of these states, so I think we're missing a lot of credit that we've been getting, like Mr. Level says, they going to affect our citizens, they going to hurt our citizens and cost them a lot of money, so, great idea.
Any other questions or comments on it? On this particular one, I think what I'd like to do is set something up maybe with the, a couple of hotel owners, you get some opinions on it, some ways that would be best to implement this and get their end concerns that are there to move forward with this particular one. And we can look, if you will, Mr. Porter, I know there's one for that dollar fee, we'll move on to the place, if we can look at that and maybe use that as a format for, if we do move forward with this. Any other questions or comments on any of these? I will note, I want to make sure that I note, based on the calculations, now, we don't know 100% the revenues on, on any of these, of course, as we get deeper into the analysis, we may have a better view on it. Based on what we have here, if, if everything we've talked about tonight did pass, we would still have to make some additional cuts, and I think we've talked about that in the past, about the possibility, there is still some fat that can be cut out, I say fat, there's still some things that can be cut out that we may be able to work with, but it's imperative that we do something. So to me, it's very important that all of these things be done, that we move forward with all of these things, I hope that we can do this in order to keep this county moving forward. Of course, the alternative is to cut back services if we're unable to do this, and of course, we do want citizens' input on this. I think we've tried to announce that we've been a very open commission and want the citizens to participate and tell us their thoughts on these things, share with us what's going on, and we want to share with you our reasoning for anything that is done, so definitely want to know what the thoughts of citizens are, and hopefully the citizens will also take time to listen and see the purpose of any of these things, so we look forward to some of those community meetings and seeing what the input on these items are. We do need to get this stuff in place really quickly, but it won't be voted on the legislature until later on, so we do have time to get input from the community before anything does actually pass, the legislative side, even if we move forward with it by resolution here, so. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Move on to the next item regarding the Christmas holidays and the 2014 holidays. You have a list of all the 2014 holidays. We did approve an extra day for Thanksgiving, I think we've done that previously, and there's been talk of doing an additional day or two for Christmas. Currently, Christmas is on the, it's on a Wednesday this year, I think the state has given their employees offer of the 24th, which is Christmas Eve, so I would recommend that we at least do that, and if we wanted to give the additional day of Monday. Again, there's not a whole lot we can do for our employees, but this is something small that we can do and I think that they appreciate. Any comments on, on the Christmas particular holiday for this year?
I'm pretty sure I'm going to need to get the 3rd day, Christmas Eve.
I'm even in favor of giving a Monday, also, just that way they've got a long weekend, but it's just my opinion, you know, from back at Thursday.
Okay, any other comments on it, or recommendations?
On the Wednesday, yes, sir. I would, I would go along with Mr. Level as far as getting a Monday off.
Okay.
Getting a long weekend for Halloween.
Any other questions or comments on the Christmas part?
You're talking about this 20th or 13th?
Correct, for this year, correct, just to add the additional days. We'll put that on the meeting next week then and entertain a motion on how to proceed on that. that on the meeting next week then, and entertain a motion on how to proceed on that. And then, of course, we have the 2014 holidays, which include New Year's Day, and I'm not sure, I need to find out if the state is giving New Year's Eve off. I think that's traditionally been given in addition. I'll check on that so that we can ensure that. But you have, again, the regular state holidays that are given for the 2014 year that we need to look at. Hopefully, we can proceed with that next meeting also. Any questions or comments on that? There's no objection, we'll place this on the agenda for next Monday night, along with the 2013 Christmas holiday for approval. Okay? Next item is regarding a medical expenses budget amendment. I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, I believe. We had, there was additional expense that I missed when we were calculating the budget, and it was just under five thousand dollars. You have that totaling up, Mr. Level?
Yeah, we just rounded it about.
Okay. The total expenses for last year were just under five thousand, so we would need to increase the budget to cover this. As I stated, property taxes on the one-twelve fund were higher last year, and I think we could cover, add an additional revenue of five thousand in the one-twelve fund to cover this five thousand expense. So, are there any other questions or comments on this one?
What type of medical expenses are we looking for? What's this for?
Primarily it's for drug screens, is that correct? Drug screens. Any other questions or comments?
Is this one we do random drug screens for the...
Random. Of course, anyone hasn't answered anything like that.
Okay.
Any other question or comment? Okay, if there's no objection, we'll place this on the agenda for next Monday night as well. Okay, next item regards the solid waste trucks. Mr. Wyder, if you want to go.
As y'all aware, we started about three years ago buying new trucks for our solid waste department. Since that time, we basically bought six trucks in pairs, so we bought three pairs of new trucks. Our first two trucks that we bought, we purchased in 2010, November 2010. And at that time, they told us, we've got the auto loaders and everything, they told us that these lasted about three years, so we've been kind of aware of this coming up. Our arms on these first trucks, and I've got pictures of them there that I laid on the table. I apologize, I just had one copy, it didn't, our color printer messed up. But we, these, the bearings and the bushes and all that stuff's kind of getting a while in. And to be honest with you, this is the first time we've gone to deal with this, and we didn't include any maintenance when we was in, added those numbers when we had everybody meeting. These arms are going to cost about fifty-five hundred dollars a piece to rebuild, and that's, the company actually do it themselves. And they actually got an option that we could do it, but it might be like a thousand more dollars if they do it, and we feel better about them doing it. A lot of stuff that has to be done, sleeves put in, bearings, teeth, everything. It'll cost a fifty-five hundred. I said we could take them down, like if we bring it down, one down on, maybe Thursday when we get done, they should be ready, be completed with by the next Monday, there's a huge, so we shouldn't be out of the truck one day. But y'all know we've got the one replacement trucks, that would be a problem really. But these, total cost for both these trucks would be about eleven thousand, we do both the arms. These things, I got to figure, you know, these things are basically picked up in their life, each truck in three years is picked up over half a million cans, and so, that arm's lasting pretty good. But you see, it started to warp, the bearings are, and they say if we don't go ahead and do it, it'll push through the bearings and sleeves, and it'll start getting these big yellow arms, as you see on the pictures, and then those are very expensive. So, I'd just like to bring this up and possibly consider it for the next meeting. I don't know how the Chairman would like to handle it, but I do know we didn't include any maintenance line items when we put them in, I'll discuss that.
Is this something that if we choose to rotate the trucks, do we still need to proceed with this?
Yes, sir, I think we would, and it would increase the, you know, it would increase the actual value of the purchase price if somebody did choose to buy them. But what they're telling us, these trucks need to be done pretty quick. The guy come up to me and he looked at them, and he said, you know, if we don't get these things done, maybe in a month, two months, the possibility of starting running through the sleeves, so we probably don't have enough time left on them to go through the whole bid process and all the smaller things, so we wouldn't need to do that. And if we stay with this, just kind of a point, if we stay with these trucks and keep on like this, you know, every, where we got it set up, every year, two trucks is going to come up and be three years old, and so we need to account for that every year in our maintenance, but that, too.
The company did a labor on that, they have a labor warranty, and...
Yeah, they would be guaranteed, yes, but they've worked good. If we did it, it wouldn't be any more trouble. So, that's the reason I'm, I think a thousand, twelve hundred dollars extra would be what money wells spent, since we, our mechanics have never done anything like that before. We don't have specialized, they've yet had a crane also. If we do it, we're going to have to build a A-frame, an electric winged吊, the whole those things, we don't have one of those. So, the first time, we've probably got more than that to build that, but it doesn't work.
Questions or comments?
Since this comes to equipment, can this apply to one of your...
Solid waste, so we could take it out of the balance that exists in the solid waste fund. We do have a substantial balance in solid waste, not something we would want a budget to deficit against, but something we could use for one-time expenses.
To use it for one-time expenses, do we not add it to their budget?
Well, to cover this cost, yeah, which we would just pay for it out of that.
I don't like that one.
Right, it would be a capital improvement, or capital outlay item, we wouldn't want to make it something that we, but, or if we do, we need to look at spending that as a budget in the long term.
And we don't have any money in solid waste for maintenance and repair?
We do have funds available.
Yes, we have, we have seven thousand, I believe seventy thousand, that line of the maintenance. We figured it closed, though.
That was tight.
We're not, we're okay right now?
I say you take it out of it from the get-go, and then let's amend down the road.
Down the road, yes.
That's just my opinion.
I agree.
You've got a fund account, so let's, let's use it.
And see where...
See where we're at then.
That's what I actually talked about, we would just go ahead and take it out, realizing that we're going, if we get down, when we get down to, you know, September of next year, we could possibly be over on a maintenance line out, and then we have to meet.
As we get close, so you need to keep it informed, and then, you know, the fund balance that's remaining in solid waste, then it can be moved from there. I think you would use one, yeah.
What was the total cost, did you have the total cost?
Eleven thousand for both trucks.
Let's take, we'll take a look, and we'll, I guess if anything changed, we'll proceed that way. Who's on that committee? Mr. Venable and Mr. Gottes? Are they going to go on? Okay. If you'll take a look at that, if that's a recommendation, we'll move forward like that. If you have this other recommendation, we'll bring that to the meeting and proceed. But we'll take a look at that, see what we spent last year, and kind of compare, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Is there something that needs to be done? I mean, any of these bearings, we need to go ahead and move on?
Something I, we probably need to approve next meeting, a week from now, if we possibly can.
Well, it, there won't be, it won't be necessary to approve it if we pull it out.
Yeah, if you approve it out of that, pull it out of what's already there.
I would just ask for the committee to sign off on it, if that's, if we want to pull it back up, we sign up, and then we'll have that record in case.
Right.
Any other questions or comments? All right, moving on to the next item regarding the railroad crossings. I think Mr. Porter presented to us information on this last week, and you've had time to review this. Mr. Wyder?
Yes, sir. I actually spoke with Aldott, and we went and visited the one in Woodville, and also looked at the one in Stevenson. This is, this project is, Aldott has been able to secure some specific federal money for these jobs, and it's, just to recall, it's County Road Five Hundred up at Woodville, and County Road One Sixty-nine near Stevenson. And what they, what they're planning on doing is putting up signs, strapping ledges off me with the R-Rs, they put on roadways and stuff like that, and then they're putting up no passing signs and stop cars. That's the part Aldott will be doing, and that's the part they're asking us to accept, you know, take care of the maintenance. Also, it's not going to be a big expense as far as maintenance goes, probably years away. The railroad, Aldott's doing one, this agreement will be with us. And then the, Aldott's also doing a separate agreement with the railroad. They're going to be putting up the flashing lights, the gates, the crossbooks that goes on top of the flashing lights, and all of that. Their agreement with railroad is they're responsible for those items that's on their right-of-way. That was my concern about them asking us about being responsible for maintenance items that's on the railroad's right-of-way, that we've always had sometimes issues with actually doing work on the railroad's right-of-way. So, we've looked at, it's just a, as Mr. Porter alluded to last meeting, just a standard agreement, and I believe what they're asking us to do would be, you know, something that we would be able to do, if, it's probably not going to be a expense for ten, twelve years to redo, and even at that time, it'd be very minimal.
Questions or comments on this?
Do we have a list of what it is? They've got a short list here of signs, markings, and legends. Is that defined somewhere that you know off the...
Yes, signs, markings, yes, that's a, that's defined in Alabama Transportation Spectrum.
You had a layout too of...
Yeah, I've got a couple sets planned for Mr. Porter, and I'm going to get them to the meetings over.
Yeah, I'm going to make sure that it's clear, that we're going to take responsibility with flashing lights and the crossarms and all that.
Right, yeah, that's what I want to make sure of, and Aldott assured me that, and I'd like for you to, of course, the contract, you already, it just says signs, markings, and labels, so that's not anything to do with the flashing lights or buildings.
Any other questions or comments? If there's no objection, then we'll place this on the meeting for next Monday night, and entertain a motion on how to proceed forward with that. Okay, next item's regarding a resolution for local, the local aquatic weed program. Y'all have in your packets a copy of a local law that was introduced, I believe, last session. Like many local laws, as mentioned, it did not make it through due to a holdup. So, my understanding is the letter on top says that a local law is not absolutely necessary, that a resolution from the county supporting this aquatic weed program is a possibility. So, I want everybody to take a look at this, and I'd like to bring this to the next work session that we have, the next work session this month, for further discussion if we want to proceed with this and how we want to proceed. I'm not sure if they'll pursue local laws again this year, but they were looking for resolutions to support this program. So, any questions or comments?
Well, we need to enact a local law ourselves to take care of Jackson County, because this whole thing, all it mentions is borders and all that.
Right. That, this is the one that was...
We need to do one for us.
There was one toward that county, I don't think it passed or went through either, it wasn't the same vote, but we would just do a resolution similar, like for this Jackson County. It wouldn't, it wouldn't stake more.
Can we get a copy of Jackson County's?
For the, yeah, I'll see if they have it.
Or we can, this is, I'm definitely going to get public opinion on it.
Right. And of course, reading through this, after you take time to read through this and see what responsibilities it puts on that, that'll be the big, you know, determination, but you'll take time to review that.
One plus of this is it gives you an opportunity to receive funding from entities that can't give to say, Jackson, they can't give it to us, the way I understand it, make sure I'm understanding this correctly. This will let this board receive those funds and disperse it as needed for control of the whole, like, not just areas, the whole like, correct?
Right, the law, actually, I believe, but there was a law, I think it was passed, I need to check on that, that creates the board and allows for that to receive the funding. What we would be doing would be basically participating in that by doing the...
That's what I'm looking for.
Any other questions or comments? You can take time to review that if you would, we'll have this on the work session for the next, for the next work session we have this month, if I can. Okay. Next item's regarding the severe weather preparedness tax holiday. Similar to the school sales tax holiday, this is something that kind of looks every year. I know for the school sales tax holiday, we did approve a continuing, basically, a resolution that would allow us to disperse that every year without having to vote on it every year. Is that fine, Mr. Porter?
Correct.
And that is not in place for the severe weather, is that correct?
I don't know of a prior continuing resolution. I think we did one for schools when they do the summer, but I don't think they've ever done one that I know of from the, for the severe weather preparedness.
Okay. So, this is something, again, we can approve it, we can not approve it, or we can, if we do approve it, we can set it to continue until further notice, until it's deemed unnecessary by either the state or the county. Questions or comments on this item?
It says if we don't respond, then we're going to take it as if we do.
Right, from the state level. We do need to pass a resolution, though, for our own purposes.
Right.
Any other questions or comments? There's a list online, I'm not sure what all includes, but we could get that. Do we want to look at doing this on a continuing basis, or do we just want to do this from year to year? The school, again, we did on a continuing basis.
Same on this one, continuing basis too.
Okay. If we could, we'll do a resolution together on that, and we'll have that, we'll have that by next meeting.
If you can give us the last one that's included, so before our annual community meeting.
It's, it's still like, it's all finished, batteries just...
I'll see if I can just lose the second one.
Jurors of two thousand dollars.
It's a whole, it was a whole school.
Any other questions or comments on that? All right. That concludes the items on our agenda, so that, move on to our reports from our staff. Mr. May?
No.
Mr. Wyder?
Yes, sir. I have a couple of things. First thing is, I talked to the Chairman earlier today, about to bring you up down on recycle program, you know, we're going to try, trial run on recycling out of county. We've talked about that a little bit before. We've obtained two trailers that we're going to use at the town of Stevenson, that's graciously done, used, that we've been working on those, we've painted and had put some tires on one of them. We think we've got everything ready for those. We're anticipating putting out the first one at Stevenson next Monday, a week from now. And then the other one, we're still working just a little bit on it, getting it ready, and we're going to pull it over to Woodville. We've talked to both the mayors, and they're all excited about it, and want to see how it work out for them. So, looks like it's, we're going to try it on trial run, see how it does work. I just got a text from the mayor of Dutton, just right before the meeting, we're looking at, we only have the two trailers, we're going to set up some cans and an area for cardboard up at Dutton, and if they vote this Thursday night to, for us to do that, and they're going to, they've got it on their agenda to consider that, and if that occurs, then we'll be putting that up in a couple of weeks also. So, we're going to have three locations to start with, and see how it works out, and then we'll try to report back to you on how it's going, and see how we proceed from there.
I think that'll be a good program. Appreciate it.
There's some very good trailers and all out there, too. These two that we got are pretty good. You know, I've seen some of these recycled sites that kind of the wind gets in them, and kind of makes a mess. These trailers, I think, is the way to go, if we decide to, you know, with the possibility of getting some more of those, you know, and that.
Will the municipalities participate to help keep the area clean? Or are they going to call us to run down there?
Yeah, we've talked with them about that, you know, if it gets to be an issue keeping it clean, you know, we can't run up there all the time and do it, then we, you know, it might be, you know, considerations whether we leave it or not, you know, how it does work. I know I've looked at one down here behind the Chevron Station a few times, I know I talked, Mr. Hodges, about that. Sometimes it gets in pretty bad shape if storms come through.
Oh, yeah. I think a lot of the ones that I see, the situation's more, you know, there's so much coming in and keeping up with it, and I think hopefully we'll be able to keep up with these, and there'll be more. If, from the ones here in town at least, doesn't seem like people are, you know, purposely leaving.
No, not that, no, yeah, it's just, it's made of the weather. No, not that at all. Yeah, it's just, it's made of the weather, you know, and blowing the stuff around.
Where are you going to take it to? The place that an Alamo?
Both mayors, oh, the back door, materials.
We actually need to approve the contract in order on that pickup. That we need to move forward with that also.
Because they pay someone to pay them around.
We had a proposal from someone here in town on picking that up. We do need to get that for the commission for.
I can't remember his name right now.
Neckla? Recycle for shot trucking.
So, that seems to be one of them. Go ahead. One question about that. I've got one more thing. I give it to y'all. I apologize for not getting this on the agenda. I just received it about an hour before it came up here. This amendment to the civil war between the Native Confederacy and this involved Estleford. We've already, of course, y'all know, we've already paid one contract to work with them to replace the old crossing up on County Road 140 at Estleford with the trust bridge. We've already started that work. It's going very well. U.S. Fish and Wildlife, Mr. Stevens, have asked, and Rob Hurd have asked us to put this. TBA is actually, is wanting to input some funds into this through the U.S. Fish and Wildlife. So, they've asked us to serve this amendment, this civil war to work. We understand that some of the monies of the $104,000 money, some of that will be coming from U.S. Fish and Wildlife and TBA. That'll all be done internally with them. But they just wanted to get the TBAs. They need them in the contract so that everybody would be aware that some TBA funds is being used for. I just have to give a copy of this to Mr. Porter. He hadn't had it 10 minutes. And I don't know if he's read it or had it come to us about it. But we need just, we could consider this next meeting.
Have to look at that. If we came with questions on the agenda, then we'd be able to discuss this back home. Anything else?
That's all, thank you.
Mr. Ford? Sheriff?
I'm good.
All right. That concludes the items on our agenda. Mr. Miller?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gaffin?
Just want to remind everybody about Northside Mountain. Me and the meeting Thursday night, 6:00.
Thank you, Mr. Venable.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Level?
Yes, sir.
The, I did want to mention, we've had several banks interested in putting in a quote for the loans we discussed. And have been asked that we extend that. I'd like to extend that to Tuesday, next Tuesday, not tomorrow, but following Tuesday. Well, I believe at 9:00 a.m. is when we'll open those to give a little more time for some of these banks to get their quotes in. Like I said, we have several interested. So, we'll see what we get then.
Are you asking for quotes on the annual basis payback or are you doing a quarterly or?
Yeah, that concludes the items on our agenda. Entertain a motion to adjourn? Motion of the second, please. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no.
Can I get your list or some of your list of those holidays that you, RLS? Email?
What you serving? What you serving? The.
Appreciate it.
You gotta let people know. He's going for the.
I'm going to say I work a lot harder, no way.
They had enough excess to fix a pack.
Letting down on your job.
Yeah, boy messed up that one.